All right, so it's number five dash fifteen S P., Special Properties, Two LLC., Seventy-eight Cranberry Road, four forty Newington Avenue, fifteen-unit Conservation Development. It is the candidate or continuing public hearing through the rebuttal only this evening.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the zoning commission. My name is Liz Suchi. I'm an attorney with a law firm of Carmody, Torrance, Sandec, and Hennessy, seven oh seven Summer Street in Stamford, and as you know, we represent the applicant, Special Properties Two LLC. This is our rebuttal following the August nineteenth public hearing on this matter that you conducted last week. We'd like to first thank the staff and the commissioners for the time you've spent in reviewing the application, the plans, and the reports, and visiting the site, patiently listening and asking questions at our May, June, July, and August committee meetings, and last week's public hearing, and certainly for evaluating my client's request and its compliance with Section one eighteen four ten and Section one eighteen fourteen fifty of the city zoning regulations as they relate to this project. We would also like to thank the public for attending the hearings to listen, offer suggestions and comments. We certainly believe, and I submit that you would agree, the public hearing was conducted with a great degree of civility and respect by both sides, and certainly demonstrated the best of what a public hearing and public comment should be by both the public and the applicant. We thought we were clear in our presentation, yet it appears that public comments generated at last week's hearing continue to reveal that there may still be misconceptions and inaccuracies and falsehoods with respect to what we thought we submitted to you in our documentary evidence and during our presentation. So once again, we need to remind you of the facts of this proposal so that you're not distracted by irrelevant and erroneous claims, and we hope to do so as briefly and succinctly as possible. As I said to you last week, certainly everyone is entitled to their own opinion, but you're not entitled to your own facts. The facts that exist are those facts that are submitted in the plans, in the reports, in the application, in the testimony by the experts. And there are also some very significant inconvenient truths, as Diane Lauricella aptly pointed out, that some members of the public simply cannot or don't want to accept. It's probably the only time that Diane Lauricella and I will agree on two words, but we agree on them from very different perspectives. The most significant inconvenient truth that I feel you should be aware of are that, first and foremost, this application is reasonable, respectful, and a responsible development. It fully complies with the requirements of the conservation development set forth in one eighteen four ten and the standards of review for special permits, and we've gone into that before, and we will touch upon them and summarize later on this evening. The existing conservation easement and conservation restriction, as I said last week, will continue to remain unaltered in its language, in its scope, in its configuration. The electric utility easement shall remain, but land underneath it can be included and will be included as conservation land, as you will hear tonight, based upon Connecticut state law, and your own regulations and the decisions you've rendered in the past with respect to other conservation developments. More than five acres of land will be set aside as conservation land as part of this project, bringing the total conservation land on this fifteen-acre parcel to ten acres, if not a little more. The five point one acres of conservation land constituting the White Barn Preserve has not been included to calculate density or open space. The half acre that is encumbered by a conservation restriction has been included since the document creating that restriction specifically permit us to do so. There have also been many meetings and phone discussions that have taken place with neighbors and other stakeholders that you may have heard last week did not occur, and we will indicate to you when those happened and what the essence of those conversations were. Some of the comments raised last week will now be addressed by either Holt McCord, our project engineer, Kate Throckmorton, our landscape architect, attorney Leslie Aceto, who has been in touch directly with EverSource and who can respond to the questions raised about the utility easement and the law with respect to the utility easement, Mike Galanti, our traffic engineer, Chris Karen, who did evaluation of this project as it relates to the fiscal importance of it, and perhaps one or two others depending upon the issue. So at this time, I'd like to call Holt McCord to the podium. And also for the record, last week, a memorandum was submitted by the intervenors, so we would like to submit a response to that, our own reply memorandum, and we have copies for all of the commissioners, and we will put a copy in the mail to attorney Ainsworth today. I'd also like to provide to you, and this is an annotated copy of the map of the property, and it shows easement A, which is the five point one conservation easement, and easement B, the half acre which is encumbered by an easement restriction. And also at this time, since we mentioned it and it's going to be discussed this evening, I'm going to provide to you copies of the nineteen thirty-two electric utility easement along with the map that was recorded on the land records in connection with that easement for your reference, a copy of the Conservation Development subdivision regulations, Conservation Development Regulations, so that you have a quick handy reference, a copy of the special permit regulations which govern this application and the standards of review set forth therein, and also copies of the conservation easement and the conservation restriction in the event that you just don't have them handy, and would like to refer to them this evening. And last but not least, just at this time, I'm going to provide you with a list of all of the conservation developments approved to date in Norwalk. There are more than twenty, and they total in excess of ninety acres of land that have been set aside as conservation land. Okay, okay, Holt? There you go.
Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Holt McCord. I'm a professional engineer and principal of McCord Engineering Associates, representing the applicant tonight. I also have a few things to hand out to you, actually, one thing to hand out to you. It is our rebuttal report, and I'm going to go through it. So what it gave you is the, again, it's a rebuttal report. It really speaks to some of the questions that were raised during the hearing last week, and I just want to go through it briefly but touch on a few points. When we started our presentation, there was a fairly extensive discussion about flooding, and so I wanted to go back to that and just make sure that everybody understood that. This area of Cranberry obviously has historic periodic flooding. It was shown on the FEMA map that we presented to you last week, and what we told you is that the Norwalk requirements for stormwater control is for a twenty-five-year storm. Our experience with the site, through the previous applications for the Connecticut Friends School and also just our understanding of the area, we made our design for a hundred-year storm. And what we did in order to help the flooding off-site, because that's really the concern of the neighbors, is flooding off-site, is on the original site, you can see on the far exhibit, there are a lot of areas that are asphalt. Those asphalt areas are being removed. The asphalt areas are close to wetland areas through the center portion of the site. That's being removed, and that does help to enhance and increase buffers. And so that one component, combined with the fact that we've added three water quality basins on site, and I'll just show you where they are just to go back to it. There is one located on the northern section of units. Here's Newtown Avenue. Here's Cranberry. There's a water quality basin here. There's also a second water quality basin on the west side of the southern group of units, and then a third water quality basin down on the south end of that southern group of units. All three of those water quality basins function together, and they help reduce peak rates of runoff. Not only do we reduce the peak rates of runoff, but we also have a fairly extensive treatment train to improve water quality. So it's a two-pronged approach. Right now on the existing site, there is nothing to promote water quality. There's nothing to promote any kind of infiltration from any of these paved parking areas that you see, and so the controls that we've created help to promote infiltration. They help to pre-treat the water before it leaves our site, and you put them all together, and they decay to reduce the off-site flooding and improve water quality.
Excuse me, Holt.
Sure.
You mentioned the paved areas. Did you point out what areas you referred to?
Absolutely. Just working north to south, this is the existing conditions plan. There's a large paved parking area on the north end that would be completely removed and restored to a meadow area, and Kate Throckmorton can speak to that. This portion of pavement would be removed, this section, and then through the middle of the site, there is a lot of asphalt, and then it extends all the way down to Cranberry Road. All of that gets removed, in addition to all the buildings that you see around the site. So all of that impervious coverage goes away. Yes, we do have new impervious coverage, but by removing that coverage, the net change is not that dramatic from one site to the next.
Is it more or less equivalent?
Pardon?
Is it more or less equivalent?
No, no, there is additional impervious coverage here. That's why we have the additional controls of our water quality basins. Also, at a hearing, there was a representative from TJ Engineering, and they had a couple of comments that I'd like to address. One was the sewer crossing. As you may recall, the sewer line for our project, it's a low-pressure sewer, it's a fairly standard piece of design for sewers that need to go over topographically challenged areas to get to a gravity sewer. So we have a sewer line that runs through our property and runs down to Cranberry Road, and then it goes along Cranberry Road and all the way to Partridge. The concern or the questions that were raised were at this location where there's an existing bridge, it's a little easier to see there, but there's an existing bridge, and the sewer line itself will be hung from that bridge. And the key to that is placing that sewer line in between the joists of the structure so it doesn't hang lower, insulating that sewer line so it doesn't freeze, and also encasing that sewer line in a steel conduit, and that conduit could go into the ground on either side of the abutments. That would create protection for any kind of leakage that might happen. Again, these pipes are pressure-tested. It is not something new. It's something that's out there in the field and used by many towns locally, and this type of protection for the sewer line is very common. Again, we were approved by WPCN with our design, approved by DPW, and so they've had a chance to look at that as well.
Now, there was a gentleman that had some concerns with regard to flooding in that area.
Yes, and so the idea is that if this sewer line hung below the bridge, then it is exposed to the force of water. If it's up inside the joists, the joists are exposed to that water. If it's connected to the bottom of the bridge, encased in steel conduit going both directions into the ground on either side and insulated, and so those protections help keep that pipe protected against flooding. I believe that she spoke about additional DEP permits, and that is correct. A project of this size, after receiving approvals, knock on wood, would have to go to a, would have to file DEP stormwater discharge permit that is typically done after approvals are obtained. She talked also about the Stormwater Quality Manual, and we have used the Stormwater Quality Manual. It is a, just like what it says, it's a manual and it's a planning tool. It has several different design aids that you can use for stormwater controls, stormwater quality control, and so each site is different. Each site uses some of the controls, or you can use some of the controls, and some sites are not appropriate to use those controls. In the report that I've handed out to you, you'll see that some of the things that we did use from the Stormwater Quality Manual include peak flow control, water quality flow analysis, and emergently outlet sizing for a hundred-year storms. That's obviously very important if you have a basin or you have a component on the site that does not let larger storms go through. You can have serious erosion and things like that, so all outlets are designed for that hundred-year storm flow. There was some discussion about roof areas and LID components. Some of the units on the property have the roof areas that go to detention areas. Some roof areas go to just straight overland flow. It's an old, you know, if you have a roof that goes and discharges to the ground, you want to put in a pipe and take it somewhere. But the new concept with LID is really going backwards a bit. It says, hey, that's the best thing for that runoff. It goes on the ground. It has a much longer path to get to the wetland. Through that flowing to the wetland, it is cleansed, it infiltrates, and it's a better approach. So on units where we can have disconnected gutters, we have done that, or leaders, we have done that. On areas where, say, we are close to the pond, the units here, you'll see on the drainage design, they go into infiltration galleries that are in the back, and that's also an LID component because we're promoting infiltration and we're trying to reduce direct discharge to the pond. There was some mention about underground detention system and had we done any soil testing? And the answer is yes, we have. We've done twenty-two deep test holes conducted on the property. All of our detention designs that are for infiltration are above a seasonally high water table. And sort of wrapping back into that LID comment was one that she made, and that was with regard to what LID measures do we have on site? And I mentioned to you disconnected roof leaders. You know, one of the biggest ones is minimize site disturbance. Well, we've taken a fifteen-acre site, and ten of those acres, five new, five that were already there will be conserved. I mean, I think it's, that is a huge LID component right there. Everything in green will remain as it is today or be enhanced. A couple other ones, protect sensitive areas. You can see what those conservation easements do, and also protection of the riparian buffers. You can see the green around the pond, and the new conservation easement city is extended all the way up to Newtown Avenue. That protects the Stony Brook prior to its discharge into the pond. There was some public comment with regard to groundwater and neighbors' wells. Our project is served by municipal water. We don't have any new wells on site to draw down. Any existing wells will be capped and abandoned per the health department requirements. Foundations on our project, as you know, many of the foundations are up on the upper area. We've stayed away from the wetlands, so the foundations are above the seasonally high groundwater. They are protected with footing drains in case there is some flow either from surface adjacent to the foundation or in case there is some high groundwater, but those footing drains are discharged to our storm system, which does promote infiltration, and there will be no issue for neighbors' wells. Just, you know, to summarize where we are, we did reduce the peak flow to Stony Brook. As I said before, twenty-five years required, and we went to the hundred year. There is a robust treatment train for water quality. The existing site had nothing. There are no adverse impacts to the on-site ponds adjoining property owners and any downstream drainage systems as a result of our design. We have significant experience in Norwalk and in the surrounding area with conservation developments in Norwalk and also developments of all kinds. This is an excellent plan. You know, I've seen all kinds. I've seen five ponds and a one-pound site. This is not that plan, and I do understand that the neighbors have a, you know, they're concerned about it, and they spoke eloquently about it, but I don't believe that they truly understand the details of our plan, protections in our plan, and the fact that this plan is an excellent plan. It meets the requirements in the spirit of Conservation Development Regulations, fully approved by Conservation Commission. They looked at it thoroughly. They felt it was a good plan. DPW has looked at it, they've approved it, approved it. WPCA has looked at it, they approved it. You know, it's an excellent example how Conservation Development can serve its own property, can serve the neighbors, serves the community, protects the environment. This is a win-win plan. If I have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Holt. At this point, I'd like to ask Kate Throckmorton, our landscape architect, to respond to the comments raised by the public.
For the record, Kate Throckmorton, Liz is landscape architect. We've prepared the landscape and lighting plan for this project, environmental assessment for wetlands, planting plan, and no wetlands mitigation. We have prepared or brought a letter to the public comments, and I'd like to hand those They're fairly extensive, so I'm just going to try to summarize and focus on the highlights. Specifically focusing on two concepts, thinking that were brought up and raised as concerns. One is that the utility easement is not compatible with conservation easement, essentially because it has, it's actively managed, and I believe the information I provided will counter that information. And secondly, infringement impacting invaluable repairing areas have been further impacted and/or will direct the White Barn Preserve. And again, I believe submitted information that will debate that. I've put up on the board a plan that highlights three things. Newtown Avenue, Cranberry Road, the green is the White Barn Preserve. The tan is actually the existing improvements on the site, including the existing house, the lawn, driveway off of Newtown Avenue, the White Barn building, the network of driveways that circle the back of the property, the parking lot, auxiliary parking lot that's underneath, up in the northeast corner. There's also a driveway that goes to an auxiliary parking lot that's, that used to straddle the parking lot. And the purple line outlines the areas that our development is going to concentrate on, and I think it clearly reflects that we're actually going to be consolidating the development on the property, taking out a lot of the improvements that are adjoining on the perimeter that are in the wetlands areas now. This central wetland was severely impacted by a whole network of driveways. All that is coming out, and as Holt mentioned, all these buffers are being restored and replanted. The White Barn Theater and its associated driveway actually brought this wetland all along this perimeter. That's being taken out and pulled out, and the existing driveway is being utilized. This, again, is where there are going to be additional wetland impacts to widen the driveway, but again, I believe we've reduced that, so it would be less of a conventional subdivision. So I'm going to kind of go over, hit some quick points on my rebuttal letter. Now, in essence, the question about whether the proposed utility easement area is contrary to a conservation easement. I've attached to my letter six publications that will support that utility lines and conservation areas can exist in concert. The first is actually from EverSource's website under their land management. This publication highlights their vegetation management techniques that they actually work with land trust throughout the state to protect and manage habitats. Number two, two A, actually, there's two following publications from the DPP. One is actually a new initiative that they've put in place in the past five to ten years. It's actually entitled Connecticut Young Forest and Shrub Land Initiatives. And if I, I'm going to read just a little short snippet of it. Because of the amount of early succession habitats declining in Connecticut, so are the wildlife species that depend on these habitats. Connecticut Wildlife Action Plan has identified about seventy-four wildlife species of general conservation need, and they're being associated with these habitats, and these habitats are in need of active management, specifically because the pasture land and disturbed land is diminishing and our forests are increasing, and therefore the species that depend on these habitats are also diminishing. And they've actually helped, if you read through that entire article, public and private lands have actually cleared over a thousand acres specifically to create this habitat that is found on the property under the utilities. The second pamphlet from the DPP is entitled The Clear Cutting Advantage for Wildlife and Forest Health, again, highlighting the species that depend and are benefited from the exact habitat that's created under the utility wires. Third is an article from Connecticut Autobahn entitled Proposed Power Lines Will Create Habitat for Bird Species Whose Populations Are in Decline. I think that's explanatory. It's for your referral and involve text. Number four, from Science Magazine, Science Twenty, Do Power Lines Provide Good Shrub Land Bird Habitat? The answer is yes, and it goes on in detail about that. Number five, article from Environmental Three Sixty Magazine, Electrical Power Rideaway: A New Frontier for Conservation. These are all current in the last, the past couple of years. And finally, a letter from the DPP from us, to us, in response to a request for the Natural Diversity Database in regard to the eastern box turtle that was brought up or was reported in the area. Eastern box turtle, if I may quote from this letter, requires old field and deciduous forest habitat, which can include power lines and log buildings. So I think that kind of highlights repeatedly that utility easements, high electrical power rideaways, and conservation easements do exist. They co-habitate very well together, and they have worked together, and the power company has worked with land trust throughout the state. My report goes on and notes point-by-point Mr. Dancer's letter, which kind of in more detail goes over the essence that I've just purported.
Excuse me, Kate.
Yes.
Could you explain your landscaping in terms of shrubs and trees?
For the whole plan or just for the utility area?
With regard to this development.
Our plan does a combination of things. Certainly, it has highlighted wetland mitigation for impacts that we've incurred here. We're doing wetlands mitigation in this area, the central wetlands, by restoring wetlands that have been filled and restoring buffers that we've, that were previously impacted. Through each development area, we are adding shade trees along the driveways in all area. There's going to be over sixty newly planted shade trees along the fronts of the units. There's going to be over 16 newly planted shade trees along the fronts of the units. Along the rears, we rear the units, we've included evergreen plantings in between units for privacy, supplement evergreen plantings along the areas that have brought in neighbors. Evergreen plantings, I think, in the old area that I had mentioned, there's a driveway that comes out, and there's an existing expanded small parking lot that's being refilled so that there's additional buffer for neighbors here. Additional shade trees in the periphery of each cluster area. As far as the utility easement goes, there's some wetlands mitigation that's occurring right at the transition from this existing paved parking lot down to the lower wetlands scrub area, where there's been tremendous amount of wood chip dumping that's brought in a lot of the basic species. That's going to be excavated out and replanted, and a control plan to manage that. The area in this portion that's now a paved parking lot is going to be converted into a meadow. Each unit is got foundation planting that's highlighted on my plan for typical list. And let's see, each of the basins are being replanted with native education. Actually, the buffer to the pond is being expanded. If you see now where these houses, there's a lawn that's been historically developed and continued to be voted as general vicinity. That's actually being pulled back, and the lawn is being reduced. So then it's very tight to the back of the units. And through the approval of the Conservation Commission, there's going to be a little fence placed in the back of that, so it's very clear where the lawn has to stop and where the maintenance has to stop. And the area between that fence and the pond is going to be replanted, and the lawn's going to be reduced. Is that covered?
Excuse me. One of the points of the last thing was the number of trees that we're going to get down. Has that been analyzed? Or are you...
Not in specific number, but I will refer back to this plan where you see the beige. These are all the areas that have no trees, that are either buildings, pavements, and lawn. And there certainly are some trees that are going to come out in these areas and in these areas. But the development really consolidates and tries to actually pull in, I think, the existing improvements on the property that provide a more consolidated dense development and existing expanded area for the resources on the property.
This drawing that was painted shows, looks like symbols, there's some symbols on it. Maybe it's not used to answer that, because it looks like trees is what these are.
No, I don't actually know.
Did you find out the issue?
The person who made you do that now will be able to answer that question. I did not, so I'm... So I think I've touched on the ecological value of the easement and how it's going to play into the existing development, that there's value in the easement, the restoration areas, and the underneath the utility easement that we're actually enhancing. There was a question about spatial configuration of conservation lands. In the regulations, there isn't any requirement or say for conservation configurations. I think the only spatial requirement is that buildings be 40 feet off of wetlands and have the required separation distance between the buildings. And that has been met in excess. We believe, again, I'm going to reiterate, I believe we've met the five criteria for the zoning for the conservation development by preserving and conserving land, by allowing recreation and open space for our residents, preserving the particular particulars in terrain and natural beauty. As we said, existing easement, or proposed easements are expanding in wetlands and up in areas and new restored wetlands.
Now, you said that's to met in excess. What does that mean?
Sure.
In terms of...
They, your requirement is the minimum of 40 feet. And all areas on the plan, our minimum is 54, and in most areas exceeds 60.
Question regarding ingress and egress or any equipment for Edwork Sources over the process of...
Yep. I actually addressed that, and I'll certainly, I'll just reiterate from my response. So it's noted on page eight, I have four future access. Utility for the maintenance and repair will be permitted, as it has historically. This development will not impede or conflict with that access. The existing paved parking lot is going to be converted to a meadow. That's certainly not going to impede any access for trucks or maintenance as required. And in fact, the guest parking area between units two and three actually accommodates such an access point, easily accommodated, should say. But the driveway coming up here, there's an existing proposed parking area. I think there's less than, you know, 10 feet to go and to get into this meadow, and that will be open access as they need to be.
And your landscape architects take into account the need to access?
Yes, absolutely.
And how many spaces are you providing for guests?
I don't know that off the top of my head, but hope before it does.
That's two things. I'm going to get back to those.
Yep, absolutely. As a matter of fact, I wanted to add, I don't live in town, but actually, my own property, strangely enough, has utility and conservation easement overlay. I've owned the property for 15 years, and I've never had a conflict or a problem. The utility company, when they need to come, there's a transformer on our property. They bring the truck in as far as they can go, and then they have to walk. That's just the way it works.
And are you saying that's going to happen on this property here?
Well, I'm saying that there is allow, there is allowance and easy access for trucks to get all the way over to the poles. That's not going to be impeded or changed. I've gone over the weapons. Just going to touch on that again quickly. As we reiterated, we've gotten approval from conservation. We lessened some of the impacts from wetlands through that process, but our restoration efforts have not diminished. The area of impact to wetlands is roughly 2,000 square feet, where we're actually restoring previously impacted wetlands. There are 2,750 square feet. We're actually restoring wetland buffers, as I said, in the central portion of the site, which are approximately one quarter acre in size. We're including invasive plant management throughout the property, specifically in the wetland buffers. And we have included the use of box culverts as actually recommended by the opposition and is conditioned under wetland's rule. In conclusion, we've worked on, our firm has worked on a number of projects throughout the town, specifically conservation developments, two actually within this neighborhood. One, which is Cottonwood Chase, and the other was a 90 in the plan Chestnut Hill. Both of those were approved. This one on Chestnut Hill has not been built out, but I believe the Cottonwood Chase is just one of the many examples that conservation developments have successfully preserved property. We're confident that enhancements and mitigation measures for this property are going to actually enhance many of the areas on site for wildlife and the resources and the water quality for the site and the watershed. I really think this is a good project. I stand behind it. It doesn't, it only builds on the White Farm Preserve. It does not impede or change the integrity of it. And I think in the end, you'll all be satisfied if you second grant the project. And is there any other questions? I know we've got some follow-up.
Is the Edwork Sources expert going to be speaking tonight? I have a question about...
There's going to be a follow-up on one of the attorneys who's spoken directly to Edwork Sources.
Okay. Because I had a question, just the power lines are there now. Do you have any way of knowing how often they are maintained, or somebody goes out and disturbs the area, if that question could be addressed?
Okay.
Excuse me, Holt McCourt for the writer, with regard to visitor parking spaces. There is one visitor parking space per unit, and they're allocated, you know, we have seven units to the north, eight units to the south. There are seven parking spaces to the north visitor, eight parking spaces to the south. And also keep in mind, behind every unit or in front of the garage of every unit, there is room for two addition quarters.
You spoke about LID.
Yes, I did.
Low impact of LID. And essentially, as I said, and probably not as openly as I should have, it's almost like going backwards with regard to drainage theory. Many years ago, the rain hit the roof and it fell on the ground next to the house. And somebody had a great idea, said, "Let's put it in a pipe." And then they had a really good idea, said, "Let's pipe it all the way to the sound," or "Let's pipe it to the river," or something like that. Well, the problem is that it takes this water that falls in that spot, and it displaces it and puts it elsewhere. And so LID is a new theory to go backwards to the way it was before, and that is put the rain where it falls, if you can. And so that's where disconnected roof levers is one component of LID. And there's a whole host of different LID components, but it stands for low impact development.
And is that the standard that engineers are using now?
Well, it's really a, it's a tool that engineers and landscape architects are using. The dilemma with the LID is a lot of times it is really focused on infiltration. It works great for small storms. You can't make a rain garden that holds back 100-year storm, but you can make a rain garden that holds back one year and a two-year. And that's where the majority of storms are all under an inch. So when you have rain gardens, or you have some of these components that really designed for that one inch of runoff, which is a majority of storm events, but you also need our larger water quality basins for the larger storms in order to control the debris.
And you can say, to answer that question, it's like controlled methods of recovery, but you can say to those people that anything, any storm, 100-year storm or less, the impact of that, this project will not increase the runoff that will affect us.
What I can say is we put less water in Stony Brook for the 2, 5, 10, 25, 50, 100-year storm events. We've studied for the small storms, for the big storms.
But it will be definitely improved into the situation there today.
Yes. Now, we can only do so much, because our property is a small piece of the much larger watershed, but we're doing our part.
Thank you, Holt. At this point, I'd like Mike Galante to respond to, there are very few questions with respect to traffic, but as he's coming up, as you'll recall, this traffic report is part of the file, and the levels of service that he analyzed that would be generated by this development would not change from current levels of service A and B. Mike will respond to comments. Your last question.
Good evening, Mike Galante, Principal, President, and Associate, located in Thetfield. Before I speak, I just want to hand in the letter. Based on my presentation last week and follow-up comments from the public and others, there really only a couple of comments that I want to follow up on tonight, and they are summarizing my letter dated August 26th. One, and this was from someone in the public, was the records to service vehicles or delivery trucks to the new development itself. Was it included in the traffic study? The answer is absolutely yes. In our traffic estimates and the standards that we use, the trip generation rates that we use, that the city expects us to use, and certainly Connecticut DPT expects us to use, it includes truck deliveries such as the FedEx, our roll delivery, and so on. But I want to add one thing that's important. While the estimates of traffic, and we use an estimate of 20 trips, 15 homes during peak hours, we really expect something lower than that, but we use the higher number. And I say that because we've done actual counts of other similar developments, and the numbers are much lower, trips per unit. But if there's a FedEx truck coming to your new home in this new development, that FedEx truck is making deliveries throughout the neighborhood, that truck is already in the neighborhood, already on the local streets. We didn't take any credit. I didn't take that truck delivery out of the mix. It's included. So in some respects, there's a few truck trips, you know, doubled or twice, counted twice in the analysis itself. Second comment was, again, I believe from the public, someone from the public, modifying traffic control, meaning we should add stop signs at intersections such as the access drive to Newtown Avenue, put stop signs on Newtown Avenue, and make an all-way or three-way stop sign control intersection. We recommend a stop sign at the driveway exit from the development itself. One, you should, and the reason for the comment was to slow traffic down on Newtown Avenue. We, Connecticut Department of Transportation, the City of Norfolk, follow guidelines that strongly suggest that you should not use a stop sign to control speed. Purpose of a stop sign is to control movements at an intersection, not speed. Second, if you put a stop sign anywhere that's not needed, you will find that motors will not stop. They will roll right through. We see that everywhere, even at an intersection when you need the stop sign. So, and there was a suggestion, I think, as a traffic signal column line, which is to the north of this site itself, towards Westport. There's, I know the street, I know the intersection, there is no need to put stop signs at side roads such as that to slow down or stop traffic on Newtown Avenue or Newtown Turnpike should go back towards Westport itself. There were suggestions about some other intersections near this site itself. Stop signs, the wrong thing to do is to control speed with stop signs. We do not recommend it at all, and the documents that we follow, and the city and state follow strongly suggest that that's not the case. In summary, you talked about the traffic last week, and we had some good dialogue there to do back and forth as far as some of the comments and issues. This is a development of 15 homes. It's a neighborhood that has single-family homes. We used an estimate of 20 trips during peak hour. I believe it's going to be maybe half or something, certainly not the 20 trips per hour. I stated, because of all the studies we've done in the city, you see on a regular basis, I've done a lot of work at Westport, we work there again, we review, we do work for them, we do work in City Stand, which is very different as far as downtown conditions. The findings of the traffic study show we maintain excellent levels of service A and B. Little delay, that's pretty much what that means. We, in my mind, is insignificant impact, was increased ability that we show at intersections, which is almost, almost nothing. I will never say there's no impact. There's always some impact. My only point is that it's very insignificant. Based on that findings, we don't recommend any change in traffic control anywhere. We do recommend a stop sign across that driveway or a road that coming out, which we need to control it. And Newtown Avenue needs to maintain right of way, if you will. Accident data shows no accidents or very low accident numbers. And, you know, there was a comment about it's unsafe. The data doesn't show unsafe roads in the area. And I'll just leave it at that. This letter summarizes a couple of the issues, and I can certainly answer any more questions you may have, if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. At this point, just briefly, I'd like to call Chris Carron of Carron Fazio. He provides the evaluation of the fiscal impact report and neighborhood impact report that I submitted last week. I don't believe there were many comments with respect to Chris's analysis other than one member of the public just stated that she didn't necessarily believe the outcomes of what his analysis revealed. But Chris, if you wouldn't mind, just, you have something else you had to submit today?
Good evening, for the record, my name is Chris Karen, Principal of the Afraid Firm Karen and Fazio in Fairfield, Connecticut. I have just a brief summary of the report, the fiscal impact report and the neighborhood impact report that I submitted last week. This will be very brief, just to summarize my findings of the fiscal impact report and the neighborhood impact report. Based on my analysis, it's my opinion that the proposed 15-unit conservation development is fiscally beneficial to the City of Norwalk, generating net revenues in excess of $190,000 annually. The proposed development makes good economic sense as it generates positive annual revenues for the City of Norwalk. And further, the proposed 15-unit conservation development will have no negative impact on the market value of neighboring properties and will not change the character of the neighborhood. Are there any questions with regard to those studies?
Yeah. How can you make such bold statements?
It's with regard to the fiscal impact study. I presented a detailed study last week with regard to the fiscal impact. And what I did in that study is I looked at the revenues that would be generated from the taxes, from the homes that would be built on this project. And I also then took into consideration the expenses that would be required to maintain that development in terms of general city expenses and also public school expenses. And based on that analysis, taking into consideration revenues and the expenses, I estimate that there's approximately a $190,000 benefit to the city fiscally per year for this development. With regard to the neighborhood impact study, there were two different analyses that I undertook. The first one was to take a look at the project, both before and after the project is developed. So I went into a detailed analysis and referred to the report. I itemized every single property that looked at this property and is located across the street from this property on Newtown and on Cranberry. And took a look at where the homes would be situated, the landscaping that would be provided as buffer, and also the existing buffer to the site. And determined that the budding properties are not going to be adversely impacted. But further, what I did, because I was concerned about some of the higher-priced homes everywhere in Westport, I did a paired sales analysis. And in the paired sales analysis, I took three existing developments that had homes that were located proximate to those developments. And I looked at what those homes sold for. And then I compared that to similar homes that were located remote from that influence. And I compared those and found that there's really no difference in the value of a residence located proximate to a development similar to this. So based on that analysis, I determined that there's going to be no negative impact by virtue of this development. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. At this point, I'd like to call to the podium Attorney Leslie Aceeto from Zeldis Needle and Cooper. Attorney Aceeto was the individual who spoke directly with legal counsel at EverSource with respect to the utility easement when it came up, became an issue. So she was the one who provided with the firsthand experience and firsthand involvement and interaction with the legal department of EverSource.
Good evening, everyone. As Liz said, I'm Leslie Aceeto. I'm the Principal at Norwalk from Zeldis Needle and Cooper. I've been practicing law for approximately 27 years in the area of real estate. I got involved in this matter when the issue of the utility easement came up. And I immediately did two things. I contacted the legal department at EverSource because I was concerned that the original individual who had raised questions about the issue may not have all the background information regarding the easement and the history of the easement. So what I did was I put together a package of documents consisting of the easement itself from 1932 and the map that was reported simultaneously with that. I sent that along with a cover letter to the legal department at EverSource so that they could see what I was talking about before we had any further communication. I did have subsequent communication with the Assistant General Counsel at EverSource. And they confirmed that they do not object to the conservation easement, provided that the easement is, their easement is respected, nor do they challenge the applicant's ability to establish such an easement. Utility company doesn't perceive that the proposed conservation easement will infringe upon their existing rights. There's precedent for utility easements and conservation easements to live together, both in the case law. And before I leave the podium, I'll provide you with a copy of my rebuttal brief that has the cases attached. But both in case law, that acknowledge the coexistence of two easements, such as we're talking about today. But also in practice, there was a plan before the Norwalk Zoning Commission back in 2009 regarding Silver Mine Homes, which was approved. And that copy of the approved plan is also in with my package. And that contains a 20-foot-wide easement for underground water main running through the conservation area. I was also involved recently with a subdivision in Fairfield. And as part of that approval, there was an open space area that was set aside. And running through that was not only a drainage easement, but also a utility easement. And neither posed a problem. It's not surprising that this issue has come up before. EverSource has, in reviewing their website site, EverSource has in excess of 2,300 miles of transmission lines that crisscross the state, covering suburban and urban areas. So as I said, it's not surprising that this issue comes up. The easement specifically states that the grantor and its successors and assigns has the right to use the land beneath and adjacent to the electric line. The utility has the right to an electric line under the terms, specific terms of their easement. My point is, in connection with this, that the two can, they are compatible and they can coexist. Another, so the first thing that I did, I mentioned that I did two things, as soon as I heard. I contacted EverSource. I provided them with information. And then I submitted my letter to the town dated August 11, which I believe is in the package. And that also has a copy of the easement and the map. The, now I'd like to address a couple of the issues that were raised at last week's hearing. And there was a question raised about a fear that there might be a future change to the current use by the utility company. Well, that fear is unsubstantiated and further, it's unwarranted. There are only three poles associated with this utility easement. One is located near Newtown Avenue in the wetland area. And the two others are located within the, what's now the, one of the parking lots. And in the future, will be a meadow. And so it will have very low, low line growth, which Kate can talk more about. But so therefore, there won't be any concern that there are approximate trees around the utility lines is not a concern. And therefore, the utility company won't, there will be no need for them to make frequent trips to the site. Someone asked about the frequency, if I knew about the frequency that the utility company, how many visits they make? Well, for an example, I had the same question. And my client has been involved in this property for about 10 years. Since that time, we're not aware of them ever coming out there. The utility poles last for a very long time. I think someone mentioned how long last week, but years and years and years. So there's really no need for them to come out there. The utility poles, as I mentioned, it's an overhead line. So once the enhancements are done on the ground, there's really no reason for the vegetative cover to be disrupted. It'll be there, it'll be a meadow, or it'll be the wetlands. And so there's no, there won't be trees in the area. And it's an overhead line, so there won't be disruption to the ground to get to underground lines. EverSource has embraced a corporate policy of protecting the natural attributes of the lands where utilities are, easements are located. To further convince you of that, I invite you to take a look at their website. And I've put a sampling, again, in the paperwork that I'll submit, I've put a sampling of that information, some of which Kate touched upon as well. But it shows their commitment to the environment and their pro-conservation policy. So unlike what was presented last week, they are sensitive to conservation areas and the environment, as you'll see when you look at the information that I've provided and you poke around their website. Further, from a more legal, technical perspective, you'll see in my brief that an easement, it's unreasonable to expect that in the future the existing use will be changed or expanded. This restriction is created by traditional limits on easement use, prohibiting actions that violate the reasonable intentions of the party at the time of the utility easement when it was first created. There's case law that provides that the use of an easement must be reasonable and as little burdensome to the other parties holding rights in the property as possible. And as I mentioned, the owner or the grantor and its successors and signs has the right to use the property under and on either side of the electric line.
Excuse me?
Yes.
You mentioned that EverSource hasn't been there 10 years. Hasn't been any development going on at all at this time? And if not, how would you expect these houses to be to have like this?
I'm not sure where the power comes from, but I know someone will know the answer to that question.
I'll try. I'm not sure I'm following the question.
EverSource is an electrical company?
Yes.
You have a development plan, how much it lasts?
Oh, the transmission line that is of topic for this conservation area, it's not the transmission line that feeds to the houses in the neighborhood. This is a transmission line that goes, I don't know what voltage is or anything like that, but it is not the source of electricity for the neighborhood. It is going from A to B to a substation or something like that. So it's not the typical pole you would see on the street or holding the typical wire that you would have on the street.
So what would be in source?
So for our development, the electric will come from Newtown Avenue. It'll be a full source, and actually, there's a pole right here. And then it'll be underground to both areas. And then there'll be transformers along the way. This line goes right past the transmission line inside Newtown Avenue. It'll keep some going. It's a high, it's not a high-tension wire like a big tower, but it's utilized that way. Did that answer the question?
So as a follow-up, there's no expectation that the frequency or infrequency that EverSource comes to the site will change with this development? History is the best indicator. And as I mentioned, since the applicant has been affiliated with the property, there's been no indication that CLMP has needed to access the property or has touched the area underneath the lawn. In some, none of the applicable law, local or state, is, prohibits the coexistence of these two utility easements. The presence of the utility easements doesn't make the subject property unsuitable for a conservation easement, nor does the current proposal abuse or otherwise violate the terms of the EverSource easement that currently exists. I'd like to, you certainly can ask questions, but if I may, I'd like to provide you copies of my brief and attachments. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Leslie. At this point, I'd like to just take the opportunity to respond to some of the questions and comments that were raised last week by members of the public that don't specifically relate to traffic, to valuation, to civil engineering, landscape design, just various questions that...
Sure. Do you think it's actually not defined in terms of width?
I was going to guess that. Absolutely, it is not.
Okay.
That's one of the comments that was raised that you deserve an answer to. So if you would indulge me, just a few minutes.
Quite a couple of questions.
That document was provided to you so that you have a sense of what the conservation easement area is that was granted in 2007, the 5.1 acres. And the green is the half-acre, 0.4 acres that is restricted by a conservation restriction. That's the only reason I provided that, so you can see graphically where those two areas are.
Do those symbols mean anything on this particular...
Do the symbols mean anything?
Yeah, yeah, that was the one.
I know, call those symbols on them. Frankly, if it's on here, it's too small for me to read.
It appears to be wetland.
They make a symbol for wetlands? Yes. Symbol for wetlands rather than having the wetland markers on the sides? In response to some of the questions raised, if you'll indulge me, first of all, you've heard at length from Attorney Amesworth. One of the things he pointed out immediately was that the utility easement is not depicted anywhere. And frankly, that's just incorrect. It's on the survey, it's on site plans, it's on the landscape plan. It's been on those plans. It was provided to him early on when he represented a group of neighbors who support this project, with whom he entered into agreement. It's been on the plans. It was on the plans for the Connecticut Friends School. It shows a line, it shows three poles, it's always been there. There were comments that the easement areas are gerrymandered, they don't meet the spirit and intent of your regulations. And I'd like to call your attention to two plans. I'll give you them in larger version. We mentioned these in the original presentation last week. And we'll remind you of them again. These are just two samples of conservation developments. The bottom one is Silver Mine Avenue. The top is Harbor Bluffs. And the reason we bring them to your attention, smaller versions for your review, is the top one is Harbor Bluff, which is around 1900, 2005. There was a stormwater drainage system located entirely to the conservation easement, which was reviewed by this commission and approved as acceptable. Then Silver Mine, which you've heard of tonight, there's a 20-foot-wide utility easement to the first tax of District Order Department. It's a water line that runs from north to south, bisects the entire property. It's located underground. That was part of that approval, and that was also branch by this commission. So the concept of utility easements being foreign to conservation developments are not being permitted, that's untrue. This commission has respected them, has approved them in the past. I see no reason why it can't do so in the future. Furthermore, your regulations do not specify in any way, shape, or form that conservation developments must exclude utility easements. And I've given you a copy of your own regulations, and you can see that it's not mentioned anywhere. So we have to abide by the regulations as they exist, and we have done that. In response to your question, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Amesworth first mentioned the utility... In response to your question, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Ainsworth first mentioned the utility easement was 80 feet wide. That's nowhere to leave. In the 1932 easement, it's not on the map. It's not in any document. Then he said it's of uncertain width, he says 30 feet wide. It's what the easement says it is. It's a N utility...
An electric line.
An electric line, AN electric line. And it's depicted as the easement has been crafted and as the easement has existed since Attorney Ainsworth also mentioned to you that the letter from the utility company that Attorney Asido supplied, in which counsel for the utility company was Robert Moore, am I right?
Correct.
That you cannot consider that since it's hearsay. Well, it's established Connecticut law that you can consider hearsay testimony because you're an administrative agency. You absolutely can consider it. You can consider hearsay testimony, as you probably know, Commissioner Stern, and welcome to the commission, it is not prohibitive. You are entitled to review it, it's provided all the time. Attorney Ainsworth went to great lengths to tell us that the proposal does not mean the 50%. It's shy, it's deficient. Well, you've already received, as I believe from staff, a copy of a certified document from the property surveyor, from whom you must receive certification that the easement, that the overall development, that the open space meet the requirements of your regulation. And I'm going to provide to you another copy of that document for the record in case you don't have it, plus confirmation from staff that the appropriate party to develop, to establish and confirm those calculations is the land surveyor, and the land surveyor of record has done that. There were some, Attorney Ainsworth went to some lengths to bring you back to the 21-unit development that you had originally seen, which was submitted in December and subsequently withdrawn. I want to let you know a little bit of the history of that so that you get a better sense of what took place and how we got to where we are today. After we submitted that application, we met with various people. We met with Councilman Hempstead, Councilman O'Toole, Councilman Patrini, we met with the mayor, we met with Corporation Counsel. We discussed the project. There was a claim raised by the Corporation Counsel that we were unable to include that 5.1 acres of the conservation easement area. We disagreed with that. We provided them with our papers in support of our position. We don't waive any rights to that claim. Yet my client decided, rather than engage the courts and have the courts adjudicate the rights of the parties, he decided it would be better off, he would be more comfortable, he thought it would be a better plan to reduce the number of units from 21 to 15, and thereby provide the neighborhood with the opportunity to have five acres rather than just over two additional acres of open space. Just for your records too, and I think these were provided to staff, our correspondence back and forth, Corporation Counsel's opinion and our response to Corporation Counsel's opinion, which includes, by the way of background, an affidavit from Leslie Asido, who was involved with the purchase of the property by the Connecticut Friends School and development of the two easements, conservation easement and the conservation restriction, as well as an affidavit from David Waters, who many of you may, whose name you may recognize. He was counsel for Connecticut Friends School, and he was involved with the creation of the easement, the conservation restriction, and the approval of the Friends School in We have also, we also then had further conversations with the mayor, with Corporation Counsel, with Councilmen Hempstead, O'Toole, and John Durco about, excuse me, Councilman Hempstead, Councilwoman John Durco, and Councilman Patrini, after we filed a 15-unit development. And I'm frankly surprised that after various conversations, after various meetings with those individuals, after the final conversation I had with Mr. Hempstead in June, offering to me to provide more information, that four hours before the hearing last week, we were advised that they had an objection to the plan as currently constituted of 15 units, required that, suggested that it be reduced to 13. And then all of a sudden, for the first time, suggested that, that they would prefer a 100-foot buffer. Now, I must, I must note, that letter that came into you last week was from Councilman Hempstead and Councilwoman John Durco. And now, it was also signed off by Councilman Bonifant and Councilman Ianico. Councilman Patrini was not a signatory to that document. So for two months, we thought everything was fine, we've had conversations, and then four hours before the meeting, that's the letter we received. Moreover, Councilman Hempstead that night not only said 13 units, he said it would be better if you did 12 units. You heard from Mr. Laurensen, who was a CLMP retired engineer. One of the things he mentioned, which I found very curious, so I did some research myself, was that his position was one of the concerns you should have, is that fandals somehow, they shouldn't be transformers, so they're the ones that, that's a concern that you should be aware of. So with respect to that, I chatted with Deputy Chief Susan Zepka of the Norwalk Police Department, because I do, that sounds like a relatively interesting question, I didn't know anything about it, and I wanted to be sure that that was something we should be concerned about since we're proposing residential development. And for your education, I have a copy of an email that goes, that comes from Deputy Chief Zepka, excuse me, it comes from Lieutenant Paul Benang to Deputy Chief Zepka in response to my request, that basically indicates that comment is unfounded. There are no, there have been no police activity reports with respect to shotgun, reports of shotguns damaging the transformers. There were some reports of down wires, fires of down transformers up on Newtown Avenue, so that should just be discarded as a complete red herring and scare tactic, in my opinion. I don't think I need to go into any more detail with respect to what Mr. Laurensen had to say, his opinion of the easement. But one other thing he did mention was that he believed that we probably spoke to someone at EverSource who had no knowledge or understanding of the easement. Well, I think Attorney Asido has certainly demonstrated that the, her conversations with Assistant Legal Counsel Robert Moore dispels that notion in its entirety, and her letter to that effect should substantiate that. Mr. Danzer, I should say Dr. Danzer, many of the comments that he raised have been discussed and have been refuted by Kate Brockmorton. But he made some comments with respect to conservation developments, special permits, the regulations, and their consistency or lack thereof with ecologist's works. When he gave you his resume, he listed all the things he's done and all the places he's worked, and it's a very impressive resume. One thing I found interesting is he never mentioned that he was employed by the City of Norwalk in June and July of 2001 as its senior environmental officer, which is the position that Alexis Karaketti holds today. And why I bring that to your attention is, Mr. Danzer's comment that the regulations don't, aren't proper, they're deficient, or in some way don't reflect what they should reflect, it's just interesting to me in that if he was the senior environmental officer of the City of Norwalk, he would have been attending and invited to staff meetings on Friday mornings that senior environmental officer attends today and has always attended. He would have become aware, he would have become aware of the regulations that exist and have some passing familiarity with conservation developments and special permits. In fact, there was a conservation development that was in process during his tenure, particularly Canfield Crossing. Now, I have to admit, that had no England wetlands on it, but it was a project that was underway while he was employed in the City of Norwalk. So I'd like to think that if he thought the regulations were defective or insufficient, he would have taken that opportunity to suggest, he would have approved regulations that would have addressed the deficiencies that he thinks seem to exist. We already said the width of the easement, the width of the easement in certain areas was inadequate. Once again, your regulations do not specify with the dimension or the location of the conservation easement areas. It does specify that they need to be 50% of the landmass. It does indicate that they can also be consistent of, they can also, they can also include previously disturbed lands. That's specified in Section 410. That has been uncontroverted, and that's exactly what we're doing. The regulations do not specify certain dimensions, do not require deduction of existing easements, utility easements, and as I said before, for Silvermine Avenue's conservation development, for example, it has a 20-foot underground, 20-foot wide underground utility easement crossing the center of the property, including portions of not only the conservation easement area, but the entire development area. And the zoning commission approved that project in 2010 without any question or without any issue with respect to existing utility easement. Mr. Danzer indicated that trails are not permitted in the 5.1-acre conservation easement area, and in fact, the easement that I provided to you, a copy of which, Section 3 specifically permits the use of trails or other facilities that exist or may be developed. And the conservation restriction also reserves the right of the grantor to create trails if he so desires. He claimed that the calculations were incorrect. We've double-checked the calculations, the surveyor has certified the calculations, we've provided that to you, and it's also been reviewed by staff. Comments by the engineer who Mr. Ainsworth presented to you, I believe Holton Cord did an adequate job of addressing the comments and the concerns that she raised. Ms. Maddox, one of the proposed intervenors, commented that she and her neighbors are very proud of saving it, and I agree with her. But the, it is the White Barn Preserve, which once again is the 5.1 acres. It's going to be untouched. It's not part of the calculation for density or open space. It will remain as is. So since it's going to remain as is, her desire and her need and her enthusiasm to save it is being perfected. She claimed it's out of heart, this proposal is out of harmony with the neighborhood. Well, as we mentioned to you last week, property is located in a double-A residence zone. It allows single-family residents as a permitted use. Special permit uses include conservation development, a waterfront club, if this was on the waterfront, a church in church buildings, assisted living facility, school, college, a museum, a mosque, synagogue, a congregant housing, nursing homes, or a variety of other uses that are allowed, some as right, some by special permit. In a double-A residence zone, the minimum lot size is 21,780 square feet. This is going to be 15 houses on 10 acres. If you were to just take the math, and let's just put aside the conservation issues relative to wetlands and deductions for that, if you took 10 acres, that would be 20 homes. We're proposing 15 on what is a total of 15 acres. I submit to you that this is certainly more harmonious than any of the other uses that I just indicated were permitted, whether they be by as of right or by special permit. Most recently, I believe it was 2012, this commission approved another conservation development on Chestnut Hill, which was the faucet development, 329, 325 Chestnut Hill Avenue, that was 12 acres. Six acres were preserved as a conservation development, and that was for nine units. That hasn't been built, but that was approved by this commission as well. So this development is very typical of this neighborhood, and as Leslie Asido pointed out, Cottonwood Chase is about a half-mile to the south. Ms. Maddox went to great lengths to try to persuade you that this project violates the intent of the regulations. As I said earlier, we designed to the specifics of the regulations, and we have done so. Conservation developments in double-A residence zones need four acres of land minimum. We have 10. They require a 40-foot setback around the entire site. We've given in excess of a 40-foot setback. They require a 40-foot setback from wetlands. There is in excess of 40 feet from the wetlands. More than 50% of the land is to be in a conservation easement. We didn't, as she said, quote-unquote finesse away anything. We've complied with all the requirements. Ms. Holton indicated that the asphalt parking lot can't be considered as part of the conservation easement area, and that's incorrect. Section 118, 410, D2 specifies that disturbed land, or land not in its original condition, unquote, can be designated as conservation land, and that's exactly what's been done. It must be continuous open space and not gerrymandered. Well, the phrase gerrymandered, I think, came up with the Silvermine development, in that there are areas that jut out, it's not a large swath, it could be areas behind developments as you see on the Silvermine plan. There's absolutely no support for the claim that the open space, the conservation area, first of all, can't be of the configuration that we've suggested. Conservation land must be, quote, "an area within each conservation development equal to, not less than, 50% of the total area of a parcel." Previously disturbed land can be so designated. There's no, there's no definition of what that is, there's no requirement that it be 100 by 100, there's no definition that it be at least 125 feet long by 100 feet deep. Unlike some of your other regulations, for example, like recreation space with other developments that you have, in recreation space in a multifamily development, you have a limitation, you have a minimum limitation on dimension, it has to be 10 feet wide. You also have a limitation that a recreation area must be at least 200 square feet. There's no such specific requirement that a conservation easement area be of a specific dimension or a specific location. If the commission thinks that that's appropriate and that's something that you need to do, then I suggest that you amend the regulations. But we have designed a proposal, designed a project that meets the regulations, not just the spirit, but the exact wording of the regulation. So there is absolutely no such language that exists in 118, 410, that requires how or where a conservation area is to be configured. You heard from Mr. Cutler, and I believe Mr. McCord addressed most of the concerns he had, and those were generally, generally, generally related to downstream flooding. And he also mentioned, one of the first people who mentioned that, we didn't speak to him, there wasn't a budding property owner. We did speak to many property owners. We spoke to the Hankins, the Calders, Mr. Diamond, and his mayor, all of whom directly bought the property to the east, all of whom were represented by Attorney Ainsworth as, and who are now supporters of the project, and who have submitted letters of support, which I believe are part of your file. And they submitted those letters of support weeks ago. We spoke to Mr. and Mrs. Waters of Cranberry Road, who submitted a letter of support, which I believe is part of your file, and I'd love to read it into the record in a minute. We also spoke to Mr. and Mrs. Mount, who are residents on Cranberry Road, and they support the project. We spoke with Mr. Molling of the Norwalk Land Trust. I'm a little surprised that when he was before you last week, he said we didn't reach out to him. Keith Rousseau, who was our project, one of our project designers, spoke to him, and Jim Fever spoke to him twice. So we did have conversations with the Norwalk Land Trust. Julian Hankin, one of the individuals who now supports the project, he was the former president of Save Cranberry. We spoke to Mr. Hankin when he was still president of Save Cranberry. As I mentioned before, we spoke and met with Doug Hempstead, Shannon John Durco, Jerry Patrini, Mayor Arrell, Incorporated Counsel, Mario Capola, Incorporated Counsel Brian Cannon. Furthermore, once the interveners filed their petition, I contacted Attorney Ainsworth, number one, because I was a little surprised, since we had been dealing with Attorney Ainsworth in connection with some of the other neighbors that eventually supported the project, that he didn't at least extend the courtesy to say, we now have some interveners, I just wanted to give you a heads up. But we offered through Attorney Ainsworth to meet with Ms. Maddox, the Cranberry Environmental Trust, and the Norwalk Land Trust, and those offers were actually declined. We also contacted former Representative Larry Faro and Representative Laugel, and they never responded to a request to meet. Mr. Plesch was concerned about flooding, and I think his concerns have been addressed at least by Holton Cord's analysis. Mr. Welsh mentioned that he believed that there was going to be significant deforestation, and frankly, I have to admit, I believe that's an exaggeration. In response to your question, Mr. Johnson, about what trees are coming down or what trees aren't, certainly with any development, trees are going to be removed. We are not required by this commission or the conservation commission to do a tree inventory, but I'm not going to stand here and say that nothing's coming down. There will be. But in response to that, we're also going to be planting additional trees, as Kate mentioned. There is also additional plantings proposed along the Calder, Hankin, and Diamond properties in response to their concerns. So while there are trees that are going to be removed, I think the takeaway from this is that of the 10 acres that we're starting with to develop this project, five acres of that are going to remain in conservation development. Mr. Welsh keeps mentioning that the dwellings are going to be 30 feet from the conservation restriction. Now I know what he's talking about. He's right. There's a 30-foot, the houses are set off 30 feet from the edge of that easement, be in green or in yellow, or whichever easement be, however bright classified. What we've been saying all along is that we must meet a 40-foot setback by zoning from the edge of the wetland line, which we need. And we must meet the conservation requirements for up in review area and setback from the wetland, which we need. He's talking about something else. He wants an additional setback that should perhaps have been negotiated in the easement and/or the restriction. But that 30-foot doesn't exist anywhere. We must comply with a 40-foot setback in zoning from building to wetland, which we do, and we must comply with whatever restrictions are for conservation, and we do with the conservation commission approved that. Ms. Coleman was our neighbor to the north. She was concerned about light and noise. While I think 15 residential developments, particularly five facing the pond, will have the same noise and light impact that any other residential development will have. We also have proposed dark sky fixtures, and that's in Kate Brockmorton's report, to address extensive lighting or unnecessary lighting. She also mentioned a 30-foot setback from the house to the edge of the easement. Once again, we comply with the requirements in zoning regulations and conservation regulations with respect to setbacks from wetlands and watercourses. That seems to me that that's just an attempt by some of the neighbors to hearken back to 2006 and renegotiate an easement, where perhaps in 2006, this should have been something that they had asked for at that point, and now we can't go back and say, "Well, this is what you should be doing," and that's nothing anywhere remotely related to what the easement says. Many have mentioned this hundred-foot riparian buffer, and that was first mentioned by Alicia Mosin, the Conservation Commissioner and Conservation Staff in Westport. That is not a statute. It is not a regulation in Norwalk. It's a recommendation by D E U P. And you can do whatever you'd like with a recommendation. Conservation Commission considered that, and they believe that the setbacks from the wetlands and watercourses, which are in excess of sixty-five feet, if I'm correct, in most instances were more than adequate. Ms. Coleman mentioned traffic, and as Mike Valanti indicated, the levels of service will not decrease from A and B as they exist today, and that a stop sign or a light and column line is unnecessary. Joanne Jackson, our neighbor across the street, classified herself as a steward for the property, and she's absolutely right. And frankly, the Norwalk Land Trust has done an admirable job maintaining the 5.1 acres and keeping it in its wonderful state and maintaining that wonderful resource for the city. But they're not stewards for the rest of the ten acres. The Norwalk Land Trust and the city have all of those rights granted to them as grantees. They don't own the property next door, and as Mr. Molling incorrectly noted, they're not a budding property owners. They are grantees of an easement. They have whatever rights that they have with respect to the language of that easement. They do not own the land next door. Ms. Jackson mentioned that there are eighty letters in opposition to this project. Well, we have fifty letters or names or signatures, and it's really not a question of how many names or how many people have signed a petition or sent you a letter. The question is, does the application comply with your requirements? And unequivocally, it does. But we'd like to just read a few of them to you. I know you have them in your file, and I know the hour is getting late. However, here's one. This is from Joe Pacero, dated August 18. My name is Joe Pacero. I'm a longtime resident of Norwalk. I'd like to voice my support for special properties application for a fifteen-house community of the town. I believe in the idea of a conservation subdivision. The open space that will be preserved as a result of this benefit of this will benefit the neighborhood and the community. I also strongly believe in the need for this type of housing to allow our empty investors to remain in the city and generate growth for the city's tax revenue. I mentioned before that William and Colleen Waters, our neighbors across the street at 67 Cranberry, support the project, and here they say, "My wife, Colleen, and I live at 67 Cranberry. When the initial proposal for development was 21 units, we felt this would affect the surrounding neighborhood and ecosystem in an adverse way. We were also concerned with how the proposed development would affect the water table in the area, as much of our immediate area is subject to flooding due to all the ponds and brooks in this surrounding neighborhoods. In addition, we feared usage of the south driveway, that's the driveway on Cranberry, would cause headlights to beam directly into our living room. Throughout the current review process, the Fever group has made many concessions. The decision to close down the south driveway has pleased us very much. Reduction in the number of proposed homes is now at a level that is acceptable to us. We still fear the flooding issue, but we have come to believe that that is more of a Cranberry-Norwalk issue than a Fever-White Barn issue, as they will be implemented catch basins to control water on the White Barn property, so the risk of flooding in my backyard will be no worse than before. We will not be able to attend the meeting 3rd August 19, but please vote in favor." There are several other individuals that have voiced their support. Here's one other one that I think is of interest to individuals of just generally Norwalk residents who are entitled to voice their support. This is from a group of individuals signed by Nicholas Valencia, Lucia Gutierrez, Cesar Pino, Jol Sertarupa, Nellie Melendez, Ravi Tomasto, and Marlene Tomasto. It's dated August 17. Dear Mr. Rin and Mr. Green, we respectfully ask that you have our letter read at the public hearing, so all can hear our support for the application and the reasons why. We represent a segment of Norwalk that seldom comes before your committee. We, however, are homeowners of Norwalk. We feel the burden of real estate taxes more than most citizens. We are not respectful of those more affluent members of the Norwalk community, especially those in Cranberry, who oppose reasonable development that preserve most of the natural resources. The proposed development will produce significant tax revenue for the city while not making demands on essential public services. The increased revenue will help the city in not raising real estate taxes on those of us who we support to pay. We seldom get heard, but do not listen to those neighbors. We just do not want any development here and there." There are various letters that, I believe these are part of your file. I just wanted to make sure that some of them you had for record. Once again, it doesn't matter whether I have fifty and they have eighty, or they have seventy and we have sixty. What you have to determine is, does this application comply with Section 118-410, 118-1450? Ms. Jackson noted that she believed that the White Barn Preserve was an asset to the city, and we completely agree. My client endorsed it, supported it in 2006, and supports it and endorses it again today. And if all goes well, there'll be an additional five acres added to preserve land in Norwalk by virtue of this proposal. One thing Ms. Jackson mentioned, and as important, is legislation that was recently enacted by Senator Duggan. I'd like to buy some copy of the legislation. First of all, that legislation doesn't apply to this project, because we haven't included the land before which public funds were used in the calculation of open space and density. So listening to that and placing any credence on the importance of that, this application is misplaced. It really is irrelevant. And by virtue of the enactment of that legislation, it would make one think that prior to its enactment, the land of that 5.1 acres could have been used toward the calculation of density and open space. Otherwise, why would the legislation need to be enacted? The most insidious thing I find about this legislation is the way in which it was enacted. It was done without research. It was done without committee meetings, any public hearing, any public comment, and worst of all, it was done without any notice to the property owner that it would affect my client. If you read the legislation, it is so narrowly tailored, it applies to Norwalk, it applies to this property. So I find that offensive. I don't know if you do. But regardless of whether I find it offensive or not, it's located on page 609 of page 686 of the bill that was approved by the legislature just this past June. It's called a rat, for those of you who don't know the parlance in politics, and I found that out by talking to other people. And it's called that because it's kind of slid in at the last minute. No one knows about it, and it's part of a larger bill, and they just vote on the budget bill, and this is the implementer, and you vote on it, and wow, voila. After you vote on it, you find out that here's an act that my client had absolutely no idea was being promulgated. I see Mr. Mushak is in the audience. I'm glad that Mike Mushak is here. I thought I was going to come to the hearing last week and praise Kate Rockmorton's landscape plan, or suggest some changes to it, or maybe even a bypass through the conservation development. But I was wrong on all three. As a former zoning commissioner, Mike Mushak should be well aware that the zoning commission, your folks, do not have architectural review capability over this project. So his comments about the houses are now soundhouses is misplaced. You have architectural review and very limited areas, village districts in Norwalk and projects that are under the control and jurisdiction of the redevelopment agency. In A, double-A residence zones and conservation developments, you do not have architectural review, so those comments should be discounted.
Special permit law allows the commission to make that determination.
Mr. Mushak, there's...
For the record.
Mr. Mushak did have his chance last week, and this is rebuttal only. First and second of all, the regulations he claims are obsolete. Well, he was commissioner. He was a commissioner on Silver Mine. He was a commissioner with the faucet conservation development. If he thought the regulations were obsolete, he certainly could have suggested changes to the regulations to make them...
I did.
May I share?
Thank you.
Maybe he made suggestions they were never included. So he had the opportunity to make changes to make them less obsolete or more current. Nevertheless, the regulations are as they exist and are as they've been provided to you. Representative LaViel noted the neighbors' concerns represent a reasonable attitude. We think the proposal is reasonable, responsible, and a sensitive design that meets zoning setbacks, that meets your conservation easement area requirements, and that meets the strictures of 410, 118-410, and 118-1450. What's interesting to note is Representative LaViel also believes that the new legislation, at least as I heard her speak, should also include the half acre. The most interesting thing is she didn't vote for the implementer bill, so she did not vote for the legislation that Mr. Duggan suggested. Mr. Hempstead, I mentioned before, we had discussions with Mr. Hempstead, and frankly, I'm surprised that after those discussions, he didn't deem it appropriate to give the call and let us know that he had further concerns or questions, or that his constituents did. He waited till 3:30 last week to send you a letter, which was never sent to us, asking that you consider thirteen units and a hundred-foot buffer. Matt Mandella of Westport, frankly, Mr. Mandella, I've never known of a project in Norwalk that Mr. Mandella didn't have an opinion about. But we already addressed most of the comments you've raised. I see Diane Laurachilla is here in the audience, and I certainly respect her zeal, but she's not a licensed environmental professional. She's not a soil scientist, a hydrologist, a civil engineer, or a surveyor. She mentioned to you that the project does not comply with the plan of development. Once again, I have to remind you that the plan of conservation development is an advisory document only. It's not binding on a commission. That is well settled law in Connecticut. Second, consistency with the master plan is to be considered but is not required by you when considering a special permit application. Third of all, even if it was to be considered, there are numerous sections of the plan of conservation development with which this project complies. First of all, private investment in the community, Section 8.1.1, eliminating nonconformities, nonconforming theater use that exists, that's Section F.2.1.6. Encouraging a balance between development and protecting the natural environment, Section 8.1.1.8. Encouraging landowners to establish conservation easements to protect wetlands and open space, Section C.2.1.8, and there are others. But it does comply with many of the sections of the plan of conservation development. To summarize, this property, as you know, is 15.4 acres. The White Barn Preserve is 5.1 acres, granted by easement, not conveyed by title, in the south end of the property and will remain. There is no plan or intention to alter it, its language, its configuration, or location. Our client agreed to this in 2007 and supports it today. That easement is silent as to inclusion of it for density or open space calculation purposes. However, the grantor did retain all rights not specifically limited or waived. If you read the easement, we've highlighted that section. Our client believes it's entitled to include this land and disagree with the Corporation Council's position, but opted not to pursue judicial intervention to adjudicate the rights of the partners. Instead, it came back to you with a reduced plan. The conservation restriction encovers 0.44 acres. It specifically permits inclusion of this acreage to calculate density and number of units. As a result, the landmass to be developed is 10.3 acres. The Conservation Commission, after public hearing and deliberation, approved an application regarding this development, lending its full support to it and finding that there is no credible evidence to the contrary. All municipal approvals, engineering, DPW, fire, first taxing district water department, water pollution control, have been obtained and are in your file. As a result, we have a development that centers on just over ten acres. The number of units are determined by a mathematical formula prepared by an engineer and certified by a surveyor, which is provided to you, and it's not a subjective calculation. You take the acreage, you divide by the minimum plot size. There's a calculation percentage that goes in. You have to take out two-thirds of the wetlands, and you come up with a number. The claim of clear cutting of two-thirds of the property is just incorrect and not supported by the plans or the evidence before you. The property is in double-A residence zone and will remain so. There's been no zone change application, no text amendment, or various applications filed in connection with this application. Importantly, a conventional subdivision has been discussed, and it is our opinion that this would result in a less beneficial proposal for the community and the city, because you would get zero additional conservation area. There is no requirement under Norwalk's subdivision regulations that additional land be set aside for the subdivision. So whether it's eight lots, or ten lots, or twelve lots, the number really is insignificant. The importance is, with a conventional subdivision, once those lots are created, there's no more land on that property that can be conserved, and every lot could be clear cut if that owner of that lot so desires. There's nothing in your regulations that would give you the benefit that a conservation development would give. Stormwater management system has designed to be above and beyond what is required. It meets for the hundred-year storm rather than the twenty-five. The proposal of fifteen houses, seven in the north and the eight in the south, conserves and preserves land, it maintains and enhances the character of the property, protects the stony brook, pond, and other site wetlands and watercourses. It provides more than a forty-foot setback around the property and more than forty feet from the watercourses, as required by zoning. Moreover, this proposal meets or exceeds the standards of review set forth in Section 118-1450 of the regulations, which are density, as we said, mathematical formula, is fifteen units, and that is what we're proposing, stable traffic flow, soil remained at A and B, availability of utilities, there'll be surplus city sewer and water and all of the utilities. Adverse impact from noise, dust, odor, and fumes, there won't be from a single-family residential development such as this. Signs, there is one small compliance sign proposed at the entrance of property. Yards, open space and buffers. Five more acres are added to the inventory of acreage in the city of Norwalk. Impact on the neighborhood, this is a residential use, and in our opinion, it's reasonable and responsible and superior to a conventional subdivision, less intrusive than other special permit uses, as we already mentioned. It is consistent with many sections of the plan of development and conservation. It conserves wetlands. Two thousand square feet of wetlands will be lost in connection with the expansion of the driveway to meet city standards, but 2,700 square feet of wetlands, which were previously impacted, will be restored, and your Conservation Commission has approved this application. Finally, no violations of system property. We believe the petitions for intervention fail to specifically demonstrate that this application is reasonably likely to unreasonably adversely impact the public trust in the water and other natural resources, and that you deny the petition for intervention. Conservation developments are excellent tools to balance individual property runs against environmental and other concerns of the neighborhood. They've been successfully created from Silver Mine to Rowayton in Norwalk, resulting in the preservation of over ninety acres of land, which otherwise would be developed. This project is well-designed and thoughtful. It is respectful of the unique nature of the parcel, yet allows the applicant to create a profitable development, one that all of you will be proud of. I've personally been proud to work on this project and with the professionals who have created, as I said, a well-formulated plan that is reasonable, responsible, and compliant. We ask that you give this application due consideration. We ask that you approve the application, deny the petition for intervention. But should you have any final questions of us, this will include our presentation on rebuttals. Thank you for your time and your attention.